All right, everyone, we're going to open the meeting. Can we please stand for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Good evening, and welcome to the May 6, 2024, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals Corps, ZBA. First, let me introduce the members of the ZBA present here this evening. Myself, Chairman Alan Donnelly. Our Secretary, Mr. Elijah Hewling. Regular Member Commissioner, Mr. Richard Briggs. Alton Member Commissioner, Mr. Larry Rushmeyer. Alton Member Commissioner, Mr. Liam Ania. Our zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Fran Lally, is with us this evening. And our always wonderful and very professional recording secretary, Cassandra Varian, is with us this evening. Absentist tonight, and he should be in very shortly, is our Vice Chairman, Mr. Carl Hinger. And also absent tonight is Regular Member Commissioner, Ms. Janet La Forgea. The current agenda can be found here at the table or on the town website under Board Meetings. When we begin the public meeting, the hearing, I will call each applicant one at a time. When I call the property address, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail. After, the Secretary will read into the record any communications we've received in favor or opposed to the application. The Chair will then entertain questions of clarification from Board Members concerning the application. We will then hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, followed by those who are opposed. Following each side of the question, the applicant will be allowed to make concluding remarks. After we have gone through all the cases on the agenda tonight, we will close the public portion of this meeting and will deliberate an open executive session. You must have at least four affirmative votes to have your appeal granted. The final decision may be in the form of approved as submitted, approved with stipulations, or disapproved. All questions and comments must be directed through the Chair. Please be assured that everyone will be given the opportunity to speak. However, the Board is most interested in hearing factual information relative to the application. And in view of time constraints placed upon us, we ask your indulgence in not reiterating comments previously presented. You are welcome, welcome to stay until the end of the meeting or contact the Land Use Office in the morning. Thank you very much. Okay, first thing on the agenda. Commissioner Rushmeyer, will you be our tentative Vice Chairman this evening, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I'd like to also have you on 107 Stony Hill Road, Z-24-20, please.
That would be fine.
Okay. Commissioner Ania. You were on at last meeting, so I'm going to have you again on 81 Pocono Road, Z-24-16. You're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Also, I'm going to have you on the review of minutes. Okay, thank you. All right, I'll take a motion to approve the April 1st, 2024 minutes. Do I have a second? Okay, is there any discussion? I have a little bit on it, but wait for everyone else.
I didn't notice anything in particular. I know the major part about the public hearing that's been continued now is that there needed to be a notification of other nearby properties.
Okay, is that on there? What line is that?
This is line 122 of page three. And are those all the ones that need to be notified, 82 and 88 Pocono?
I believe that's a question for Mr. Lally.
I'm sorry, I missed it, I'm sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Ania was asking if that was the only ones that needed to be notified, which was 82 and 88? 82 and 88?
No, within 100 feet probably.
So it was one and 100 feet, so there were additional notifications on it?
And they were sent, yes.
All right. Yeah, I did notice that. It's online, they have it online. And you can ask about that when you want. Is there any other out there? All right, I got a couple little things. On page number two, line number 91 says the applicants were adding a second floor. They would not be expanding the footprint slash, I believe we said no intensification at the meeting. So there wouldn't be, no, there wouldn't be any intensification. So I'd like to add, right after footprint, no intensification, please. And then I did not see at the end, so line 96. "Member Ania, second motion was carried unanimously." I didn't see the hardships on there, and the hardships were, correct me if I'm wrong, pre-existing non-conforming and the septic on that one. Does that sound familiar?
Yes.
So I'd like to add the hardships on there if possible, that's around line 96. Next one, I'm going to just read it here. This is on around line 113, right after wetlands. Got to read my own handwriting here. Chairman Donnelly asked about the various different, you know what? This is not that important because I didn't do it in advance, don't worry about it. So that was the only thing on the other ones. Line 91, line 96. Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
One, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You guys, there is line 80, it does say pre-existing non-conforming structure. I know you said there was not, you said.
Okay.
Usually you need to add, you need to add the septic.
Septic, can we add that there? I thought we usually put it at the very end, but if it's anywhere in there, it's okay for him?
Yeah.
Okay, so can we just add septic? So let's line 80. Pre-existing non-conforming, right after pre-existing non-conforming structure and septic. Thank you. So I'd like to take a motion to amend the minutes or approve the minutes as amended. Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on. The Vice Chairman's running a few minutes late on this, so I'd like to take a motion to table the first continued public hearing, which is 81 Pocono Road, Z-24-16, and take 107 Stony Hill Road first, if we could. Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So our first application is going to be, and that's going to public hearings. All right, 107 Stony Hill Road, Z-24-20. Renee Cornell, 107 Stony Hill Road, and that is for a required dimension of 30 feet. However, I have a question on that. Proposed dimension is five foot seven, variance request is 24.5, and that is Article 3.5. Could the applicant or proponent of the applicant come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail?
I do not see him present.
Mr. Akil?
I can go look next door.
Okay.
We were at that meeting too.
Maybe he's over there.
Maybe they should make an announcement so that if there's other people in that meeting, because there's nowhere on the announcement here that what room number to go to. So perhaps.
Doesn't have ours, only on the agenda it has room 135.
I wasn't set the agenda, I was set this.
Okay, it doesn't tell you what room number?
No.
Thank you, ma'am.
I still think Sheldon should go there, make an announcement.
Yeah, that's what he went to.
He's going to make an announcement.
He's zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Lally. He's doing that right now, we'll give him a minute.
I do not see him present.
Don't see him present, no? Don't see him present? Okay. I don't want to open a public hearing without him here. I will take a motion.
Just table it.
Yeah, just table it for right now?
Yeah.
Okay. I will take a motion to table the public hearing on 107 Stony Hill Road, Z-24-20, and hopefully the applicant shows up before the end of the meeting tonight. Second. Motion, second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Fran, we're a little bit of a sticky situation because we need Carl here. Maybe just go grab him, see if he's done.
Who, Carl? Is he over there?
Yeah, he's next to him, sorry. One second, sir.
Yeah, no worries.
Son of a bitch, all right.
He went in there.
He went, he was in there.
He's definitely there.
He's definitely there.
If not, we're still going over everything again, right?
Yeah, it's still really the open public hearing. Yeah, on the deliberations, we could, we could do that if we had to. We're going to go over everything again. There he is. I'll take a motion to seat the Vice Chairman, Mr. Hinger.
So move.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We tabled the first application because he's going to our own hearing, he might show up in a minute. All right. So, we're going to go back to continued public hearings. So, continued public hearing, 81 Pocono Road, Z-24-16, Daniel Gera of Stone Properties LLC. And that was, should I get it right? Present dimension 50 feet proposed, required dimension 50 feet, proposed dimension 10 feet. Variance request is 10 slash 9 feet, I made a note from the last one. Zoning regulation is 4.3. alpha. Where the applicant or proponent of the applicant, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal.
I think we may need to say that again.
Want me to say it again?
Yeah, well, I just, you said required 50, proposed 50, but required 40 is 40.
Oh, thank you. All right, I'll say that another time. Proposed dimension, it says proposed in the beginning here, that's where I read.
I was confused.
Oh, all right, I won't read.
Because there's nothing there now, so I didn't know.
Yeah, required dimension 50 feet, proposed dimension is 40 feet.
40 feet.
Variance request is 10 slash, I wrote a 9 from last time, and that is zoning regulation 4.3. alpha. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail, sir.
Okay, sure, Daniel Gera, 52, Rita Drive.
Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals, sir.
Thank you, that's in New Fairfield, Connecticut. So, since this is a continuation, I'm not sure what, like, last time we had discussed.
What I was hoping is maybe you could generally go through everything, some of the members that weren't here before, and it's the public hearing, so they can ask questions and stuff, so.
Sure.
Refresh everybody's minds, sir.
Sure, the last time, we, I think we had agreed that only the four Board Members that were here.
Were closed deliberations, yes, sir, you're correct.
Okay, so, I'm requesting a variance to zoning regulation 4.3. A, which is dimensional requirement for minimum front yard setback. This is for 81 Pocono Road. 81 Pocono Road is a 4.9 acre parcel just across the street here. From the municipal center, the required front yard setback is 50 feet, and we are requesting a 10-foot variance, really it was 9 feet after we drew it out.
No, this is a ZBA.
Mr. Akil?
Sorry, I'm just looking for wetlands, I think they're cancelled or.
Sorry, go ahead, sir.
Sorry, so 41 or 40 feet. So, I wasn't planning on presenting again, but it's a good thing I brought my drawings. So, I don't have my face on board this time. Okay, so here is our plot plan, this is a map of the property. So this property runs sort of north-south between Pocono Road and the railroad tracks. And what I'm going to do here is I'm going to switch to the next page. And this is going to communicate the hardship.
Do you want me to help you hold it?
Oh, okay, thank you. So there's really four hardships to this site. Most notably, and I color keyed it for the Board. So most notably, we have a Iroquois gas main pipeline easement that essentially cuts the property in half, that's this magenta hatching. Additionally, we have inland wetlands, which are noted in this blue hatching. When you're dealing with wetlands, you have a 75-foot upland review area, which anything, any activity within that area is subject to review. And then when we incorporate our required setbacks, front, back, and sides, we're left with less than one acre of developable land. Additionally, there's significant topography issues with this site, so we're here in the municipal center across the street. So from the northwest corner, sloping southeast, we have a 30-foot grade change. And that is the hardship map. So if you're looking at this plan, the white is really the only area not affected by either the hardship or the current prescribed setbacks in the zoning regulations. So we are proposing a self-storage facility at the site.
Two floors, sir?
It's, it's what they call built into a hill. So it is technically two floors, although because of the sloping grade of the site, it feels like one story, and then you're going to drive down behind the building to the other story. So from Pocono Road, it will appear as one story. I think it's about 18 feet tall to the ridge, measured from the road.
So it's a downslope from the road to the back of the property?
That's correct, yep, here, I'll pack up so everyone can see it a little bit. So this is, we were encouraged, so we went to inland wetlands because we're proposing activity in the upland review area. We were encouraged.
I believe it was, don't mean in a row, 50 square feet, I think it was.
So we had proposed 50 square feet of disruption or disturbance to the inland wetlands. They encouraged us, due to what they described as the hardship, to come to ZBA and essentially ask to move the entire building closer to the road so there's no disturbance to the wetlands. So this is, so in the application, I included what was originally submitted. So this meets all zoning regulations in the town of Brookfield. This has a 50-foot setback. And then the next drawing I have is what I'm asking for with my application. So, right here, you can see this is where the disturbance to the wetland was going to be proposed.
And the eastern side of the property, left center of the center building?
Correct, exactly.
And it's 50 fair, 50 square feet of disturbance to the wetlands?
Correct, and really not permanently, but according to my civil engineer, that's the construction activity. But yes, there would be a disturbance. And the inland wetlands commission does not like that, and so they encouraged us, can you just go to ZBA because of this hardship and push the buildings closer to the road, which is what I'm here to do. However, when this was, I was given, I asked my civil engineer, how much room do we need to move these buildings, or at least this one, maybe two buildings? The dimension was 15 feet. You'll note on my application, I'm asking for 10 feet. So I didn't feel comfortable coming to this board and asking for all 15 feet. So I compromised as best I could and came up with the plan that's sort of proposed to this board, which is nearly identical. However, I have shrunk this middle building five feet, that's that delta of five feet, so that we have sufficient separation to the inland wetlands, and that nets us, and I actually dimensioned it here in red. It's, you know, 46.7 feet here, 42 and a half, 41.8, 41, 41, 41, and then the office building is still 50 feet. So it's not even across the board, 40 feet.
I think last time you said it's roughly nine.
It's roughly, the 10-foot, once we drew it out in AutoCAD, correct.
So it's a nine-foot variance?
That's correct. So instead of a 50-foot dimension to Pocono Road, we're requesting 41 feet at the closest here. And so, we had discussed last time, you know, offered alternatives. I've explored every alternative. We discussed, you know, at the inland wetlands, they said, well, you know, maybe you can create wetlands, and the site, just due to all of the hardships, the easement, the wetlands, we have to have a septic system, there literally just is no space. What you see here is what you get. In terms of disturbance of the site, you can see that's pretty good for a five-acre site, where we're disturbing about, you know, an acre and a half, two acres. So I think we've looked at alternatives, I think I've compromised as best as I could. I think we have legitimate hardships here, multiple hardships that were not created by me. And frankly, I think that this is a really good use for this piece of land, and without some sort of variance like this, I'm not sure that this land has any value.
None of the other buildings on that road have a variance for a forward setback. And it's unfortunate that inland and wetlands is dragging their feet over 50 square feet. I'm wondering if you could, thought about going back and asking if you could do a rain garden or something in that disturbed area?
Well, I don't think that the approval for the wetlands was dependent upon the outcome of this. I think that they just suggested that you have a legitimate hardship and you should explore this. They were not at all open to even having a conversation about disturbing the wetlands. She just, we, she was, she shut down instantly and didn't even want to hear my engineer that I paid to come.
I understand.
Yeah, so I've done my best in terms of compromising. Now, you bring up a good point, which is the harmony of the neighborhood, the harmony of the, really the road and the town. So we're proposing this is not your standard typical metal shed storage, so we're proposing something that's going to be in tune with the neighborhood. We're proposing color-mash roofing, we're proposing stone. These are just some concepts from the building company. And additionally, I think the most important thing to consider is this is an I-1 HO zone, so I technically could go much taller than I'm proposing. I think that has mu, far greater impact on the feel of the neighborhood than the building moving nine feet closer to the road. And in addition to that.
Could we see that? Excuse me?
Yeah, sure, I don't.
Please let him finish his presentation.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir. And so the final drawing that I have here is our proposed landscape plan. So along Pocono Road, so here's Pocono Road. So we have significant landscape vegetation screening. Additionally, we're proposing a nice decorative wrought iron fence with stone columns every 15 or 20 feet. So our feeling is between the vegetation, between the relative low height of the building, and between this decorative fence and stone columns, anyone walking, living across the street, or driving on Pocono Road won't be able to feel nine feet closer.
On your plant list, do you have evergreens in the front there, between the road and the buildings?
It's a great question, I believe there's Arbor Whitey Green Giant.
Okay.
There's a mixture.
Can you tell me what size they are?
I, sure. So I'm just, I'm not a tree expert, I'm just going to read off of my table here.
Yep, this one. I apologize.
No, no, no. I'm just going to look at it, sorry.
Yep, yep.
Page is not cooperating.
I understand.
Okay, so we have, you want just the front?
Yep.
All right. So the front, we have K-L-R-E-R-I-N. We have mountain laurel, 24 to 36 inch height. We have autumn flame maple, 3-inch caliber, six of those. We have GT is shade master honey locust, four of those, 3-inch caliber. CC is forest pansy eastern red bud, 2.5 inch caliber, we have 12 of those. Spirea gold flame, we have 14 of those. And I'm going to jump right to your green giant, which is TP. And it looks like the engineer has only set those in the rear of the property, not along the road. And all of this is in the file, if you wanted to take a closer look.
Would you be, you think it would be possible to plant some evergreens in the front of the building?
I do, I think, you know, my civil engineer just sort of did whatever they do on their end, and I would have no objections to that at all. Yeah, they're year-round screening.
Yep. Anything else, sir?
No, I think that covers it pretty much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your time, yeah.
At this time, I'd like to ask if there's any commissioners that have any questions for the applicant or follow-ups? Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Ania? Any questions upon? I have a couple of follow-ups, if you don't mind, just to refresh everything.
Sure.
And I have, this is the same map I showed you last time, if you don't mind coming forward.
Yep.
So this is the final one, the final proposal.
Correct.
That you have here.
Yep.
Okay, so one of the questions, and right about there is where that 50 square foot of disturbance would be.
That's correct, yep.
So it's roughly on the east side, left of center of the center building? Give or take?
East side, left of center, yes.
Yep.
So it's just north of the center of the middle building?
Yeah, I re-watched, or like the fourth time, the inland wetlands meeting on March 11. Is that, explain that disturbance again, is it a permanent disturbance, or you had to get down in there with equipment, therefore that equipment makes a disturbance?
That's a great question, I don't know that I have a great answer for you. If you're looking at a drawing, if you're looking at the drawings that we submitted to inland wetlands, we're actually not crossing over that line by 50 square feet. My understanding is, talking to the civil engineer, this wall that you're looking at in plan view is actually two feet deep, for lack of a better word. And so I think even though you're seeing the mildest crossing there, which is not equal to 50 square feet, I think what he's saying is this, with the footing that it's constructed on, which is a stone, the wall, the stone, so, and I'm not sure that, I don't, I'm not an inland wetland soil expert, but I'm not sure you can temporarily disturb them. I don't think in the commission, they brought that up. I think it was either you're disturbed or you're not disturbed.
Okay.
So, my understanding is, once you disturb them, they've been disturbed, that's how I interpreted it.
Sure, this is a follow-up and I'm basically the same question I asked you last time. So when you're looking at the map here, why not take your left and right, okay, or your north and south buildings, push them back to the original location, right? So it's within the required setbacks and stuff, and just shrink the size of the middle building. I'm getting to some of the things they were mentioning, wetlands, about prudent alternatives and stuff.
Yeah.
And one of the things, that was one of the alternatives, there was another one too.
Yeah, so.
That's a question, sir.
I think I explored that alternative as much as economically feasible. So it was a 50-foot building, my engineer or what you're proposing is shrink it down to 35 feet. We're getting below a threshold where this, this no longer makes economical sense.
I remember this from last time, it's kind of a financial thing.
That's not me just only, you know, hanging my hat on the financial component. I have explored all alternatives. We're getting below a certain threshold where literally you cannot develop the site financially, so.
I think you also mentioned something about wanting to have it straightened back versus.
Right.
Could you explain that again, sir?
Yeah, sure, so, let me get to the right plan, just so that can kind of be communicated here. So if it even were economically viable, what the Chairman is kind of suggesting is why, you know, can't you just shrink this middle building even more? If that were economically feasible.
And leave the two, the left and rights, the north and south, original where they were?
In the original plan, yep. So what you end up with is a curved road. So this is, in addition to parking and loading for tenants, this is our fire truck access route. So, in two dimension, it doesn't, a jog or a curve doesn't seem that critical. However, each of these buildings is stepped in elevation, three feet from the neck, so these are actually ramps in between each building. So in terms of sightline or line of sight. So in terms of sight line or line of sight, we were concerned that you're going up a hill and you're curving at the same time. And it's not a very wide road to begin with. It's basically the minimum that the fire department permits, again, because of our wetlands and because of our, uh, gas line easement. I'd love to make that wider and then you can have more curvature in that road. At twenty feet, uh, line of sight becomes an issue if you have a tenant here, you have a truck pulling up the hill and curving. So I, I don't think it's unreasonable to have the position that as straight as a road as possible is, is the most desirable.
Uh, I'd also like to note for the record that, uh, last week I called the fire chief, Andy Ellis, just to follow up because I didn't really understand that.
Okay.
And I spoke to him again this morning and he was basically indifferent around the backside of the buildings as long as it met the minimum requirements for emergency vehicles. And I said, well, what if they happen to shrink the other building and it was wider back there? Does that make a significant difference? He goes, wider is all the better, you know? Wider is wider for emergency vehicles. Um, I just wanted to make-
Right, but just remember we're, by shrinking that, we're also pulling the curb line. So it's not, it's not going to net a wider lane, the whole thing is moving over, right? Because we, we still have to get away from the wetlands. So it's not like you're holding the curb line and making this building smaller. That would be great. I'd love if we can do that. In terms of now you have a wider access lane, you're still maintaining that twenty-foot wide lane and you're now just pulling it over. So it's not wider, if that makes sense.
Yep, I'll be real quick. Um, last, this is really a follow-up question. Um, at the last meeting, Commissioner Nia asked you about the first meeting at wetlands on three eleven and you said, and I'm just asking if this is correct, if I'm fully incorrect. You said that, uh, they, meaning wetlands, seemed confident that if the ZVA granted a variance, you would no longer need a public hearing or agree to not have you hire a, this is wetlands, a third-party soil sci- scientist to review your soil, soil scientist work. Could you explain that? It, it happened at thirty-nine, thirty and-
Yeah, sure. I, I think what you're saying generally is accurate, what, what I said. The inland wetlands commission was not receptive to our proposal whatsoever. And I think if you watch the video, it's pretty clear. Uh, it was a little bit disappointing, frankly. Um, we had our drawings, we had our presentation prepared and she didn't even want to hear what we were trying to propose. Matter of fact, they didn't even look at our stormwater drainage plan and brought up concerns about stormwater drainage. So that's a little disappointing, but, uh, in any, in any case, um, what I was referring to was that she more or less said that you do not want to go to a public hearing and you do not want us to get a third-party review for the soil scientist. Your best path forward is to not disturb the wetlands and our recommendation is the ZVA can possibly permit that. So my interpretation of, of what she said with the commission, I know it's not just one person, what they said was that you need to do anything possible to not disturb these wetlands and we're not really interested in hearing alternatives except for moving the buildings or shrinking them so they're not disturbing the wetlands. So, um, I can only speculate what the commission would actually do, but she suggested, again, if you watch the video, see if you can move these wetlands, uh, these buildings out of the wetlands and it becomes si- kind of a moot point in terms of a public hearing, third-party soil scientist review, et cetera. There's no guarantee that those two things will yield me an approval for inland wetlands. What she did say was that you, you really don't want to do those things because they reduce your chances of an approval.
Okay, all right. But I pretty closely quoted the-
I think so.
... fox. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Any other commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
I don't.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application.
Can we see the pictures?
In one second, yeah. Then we're, we're going to have you lay those out so people can see.
Sure.
Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
I'm going to state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
Tacy Pack, T A C Y, P A C K, and I'm sixteen Bristol.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Welcome to the Zone of War of Appeals.
Thank you. Let me just start off that. I, I really think that, um, Brookfield has done a marvelous job on trying to keep the aesthetic and, and the feel of it being still country, very nice, right? Anything like a storage unit or anything of an industrial nature seems more to have been placed on federal road and not near residential area, you know? So I know this zoning is about how far away from the, I want it to be way far away.
Run to the back, yes.
Try New Brookfield. Put, put it back where, where you live. Put it over there.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, um-
If it'll help you clear it up, there was a, there was a rewrite in twenty eighteen. The, the right side of the road or the east side of the road used to be the residential zone and then in twenty eighteen, they took it from there and went to the railroad tracks behind there, if you know what a railroad tracks are.
Yes, I do.
That's when the rewrite occurred and it got changed to the I one HO now, if that helps you.
It's just that it seems that the, the, um, if you look, if you look at town hall, look how beautiful this place looks, you know, and how they've made it aesthetic with the countryside. And I think that, um, Daniel brought up about the harming of the road in the town on the, on the looks and, and I, I just can't see how this is going to appeal in any way whatsoever. And, um, I was a botany major ten thousand years ago and I'm very strong about the wetlands and trying to keep that because it's not, there, there's a lot that goes into that. So I, I, it's, it's not a minor issue and, and I, I, I just would strongly suggest there might be a better placement or area for, for you to be able to get your storage units and, and have what you want.
And if there's any questions you'd like to ask the applicant through the chair, you can ask me and I'll-
No, I thought he was very thorough.
Okay.
And I appreciate his presentation.
Thank you very much, ma'am. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to this application.
And we're all together, so we're from Liberty Crossing.
Same house?
We're just worried about the-
No.
Would you like to stand and state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Side is, side is Villan, Nine Comstock Trail, Liberty Crossing, Call of the Association right behind where the storage units is going to be placed. So my main concern is about, uh, lights, how, this is going to be twenty-four hours, I believe, open to the public, correct?
Your answer is-
That's-
Sir?
So if you-
No, this is the chair. That's not, that's not correct. Oh, it's not correct, okay.
It will not be open twenty-four hours.
Will it be illuminated twenty-four hours?
That answer.
Yes. Facing the back.
Yes.
That's what I'm-
I don't, I don't know.
That's not maybe, sir, because it's right where we leave.
Right.
And I, I, I saw you mention some, uh, big trees on the back. How tall the trees would be, the back?
Your answer, sir.
They're not going to block the lines.
Um, I don't, the plans don't call out height for trees. They know them by caliber. Caliber, so those are thickness.
Thickness.
They're going to be as tall as the trees that you see around eventually. They're going to be as tall as trees get.
Is there, are you through, sir?
I will say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing none. Sir, you have the final concluding remarks.
Okay, well, I appreciate your, your comments. I, just a little background about myself, I'm not, uh, an investor coming from out of town. I'm from the area. I work in Brookfield. My mother has had a business in Brookfield and now in Milford for, uh, I'm thirty-eight, so my entire life. These are some renderings of just the, the type of concept that we're, um, we're looking for. The idea here is to harmonize with the town. We understand this is New England. This is not nineteen eighties metal storage sheds. So we're going to be introducing, uh, I'm sorry, but this is a nice looking building. This looks nicer than some of the houses on the road. Uh, so we're going to be introducing different colors and materials in addition to the landscaping to harmonize with the neighborhood. In terms of your concern about wetlands, that's super valid. You should absolutely be speaking in favor of my variance, which is to get as far from the wetlands as possible. So I appreciate your concern about the wetlands. That is a legitimate concern. That's why I'm asking to move a little bit closer, um, to the road. In terms of, um, what was the other concern? I think that, you know-
Twenty-four hours, operational, it's going to be-
I believe it was the lighting.
The lighting.
I believe it was lighting.
Uh, I mean, your, it's my understanding that your actual condos are in the, I'm not going to quote me on this, but on the GIS in, in the neighborhood of thousands of feet from this development. Sorry?
I wronged it.
Okay, so thousands of feet, okay? The lights are, this is not a prison. The railroad track is cutting through between my proposed development and where you folks live. You folks also have wetlands and other environmental things that were disturbed when, when your condos were built, so it's, it's nothing new. Um, I would like to remind the, the board and the public, this is an approved use for this zone. This is an industrial zone. I understand there might be some residential houses still here. In terms of use, uh, if you go through the zoning bor-, um, zoning regulations and you look at all of the approved uses for this particular zone, this is an absolutely fantastic use. If I lived next door, I would want this. We could be proposing a distribution center. Another, instead of UPS, we can have a FedEx facility here. So in terms of traffic, in terms of the appearance of the building, um, this is not the Cube Smart development on the corner of Federal Road by Coles, there's a giant metal building. Uh, we're introducing stone, we're introducing different materials. Uh, we have a landscape buffer. Um, I am the applicant, but I'm also going to be the operator of this business. So I'm not a national developer or investor. I'm a local, uh, person to the area and my primary concern, uh, is harmonizing with, um, the community. You guys ultimately would hopefully be my customers. So the last thing that I'm trying to propose is a development that is not aesthetically pleasing, that's disruptive to the community, so on and so forth. But I do want to just be super clear, this is an approved use and instead of tractor-trailers all day, every day, we are proposing a handful of cars and maybe a box truck daily. Um, in terms of lighting, my engineer has, uh, it's on the drawings. So we have, uh, pole lights in the front of the building. Those will be facing from Pocono Road towards the front of the building.
Are those sun down to sun up, sir?
I honestly, I don't know. They are-
Probably solar suns.
I think they're designed within whatever the standards are in the zoning regulations. Um, and then these ones are facing towards, um, the gas pipeline easement. Also remember, your development is, again, don't quote me on this, but hundreds of feet higher than this proposed development. So those lights are at a significant elevation difference between where you live and where they're proposed. That's my answer.
The lights, uh, the lights on the back side of the building are security and also for just illumination for-
For sure, yeah. I mean, in the winter time, it gets dark, it-
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but all you really need to illuminate is the area, the approximate area around the building.
Oh, that's correct, right. So we're-
I would assume that the building code's currently in play right now in Brookfield to cover what those movements are.
Right, we, we do have a lighting plan. I didn't print it out. I didn't think that was part of this conversation, but to his point, the lighting plan is designed in accordance with any local regulations. We're, we're certainly not proposing more lighting than is necessary and it's certainly not intended to illuminate the woods or the gas easement. It's intended to illuminate the drive aisle surrounding the building.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, a good point, I guess my own just anecdotal experience is when I drive on Grace Bridge Road where there's a stone and gravel area. It, it looks like a, a spaceship has landed because they have these big lights. I think he's got a few problems over there. Yeah. I'm sure Frank could fill you in on a few other things as well. Well, anyway, I was just, because I thought in terms of the neighbors, if the lights were directed in a way-
Right. They're, they're essentially directed towards the building or towards the gas easement behind the building, but focused on the back of the building. We're certainly not trying to eliminate more than is necessary. Uh, that would just not make any sense.
Yeah, the driveways, the buildings.
Right, we want the site to be here secure and people to feel safe, exactly, but we're certainly not trying to illum- this is not a football stadium and we're trying to illuminate a, you know? This isn't Topgolf, right? We're not trying to-
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Do any other commissioners have any other questions at all for the applicant?
I just want to, uh, clarify, we, we touched on it before. I just want to make sure that I'm right on this. Uh, you said that you would be comfortable if, uh, uh, stipulation of the approval was to have, uh, some of those, uh, evergreens also in the front, uh, something that could be worked into the plans?
I would be comfortable with that.
Yep.
Okay. I actually love evergreens, so I think they look great.
All right, thanks.
And also at the last meeting, you said that nine was what the auto cat was rather than-
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So you'd be comfortable at nine?
That's correct. Yep. And I apologize, maybe you should, I don't know, I should amend the application to nine, so I just figured I could kind of verbalize that here.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Any other? I'm going to ask the, ask for a ruling from Mr. Molly, but she has a follow-up question, but you already have, I don't have his concluding remarks.
It's a very brief little kind of-
Ma'am, you can ask your question through the chair. Go ahead.
There won't be any huge additional traffic, right? I mean, you've looked at traffic.
Think he answered that before, but you can-
Sure.
I, I didn't do it.
These facilities do not generate any sort of additional traffic like you would see at a restaurant, a bar, a distribution facility. Um, again, I don't have the regulations in front of me, but if you go through the approved uses for this zone, a self-storage facility generates far, far fewer vehicles.
Okay, that's, that's all. I just want to make sure that traffic's been looked at.
Sure, and just to, just to kind of, um, hammer that, that concept home, um, the way traffic is often evaluated in a development is the number of parking spaces required. This development only requires, I think, like four parking spaces for the entire site. So if this was medical, if this was restaurant, if this was retail, this was, um, light commercial, you would have dozens and dozens of parking spots because of all the traffic. So their, their self-storage facilities are known for very light traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, final question. Uh, if you could pull up the proposed map, uh, with the variance on it for me. Last meeting, we were speaking and, um, I asked you, I said, hey, if you, if you absolutely had to create two hundred square feet of wetlands, like wetlands was stating, they said, hey, you can come in front of us, show something, creating two hundred square feet. I believe you told me somewhere behind the center building for a hundred and, you know, ten or twenty feet, if there was any area at all, that would be the area? Does that sound familiar, sir?
I do, that does sound familiar and, um-
Just wanted to see if you could point that out again. As I didn't mark it on my map when you told me last time.
So you were, if you were looking at this plan, um, and again, this is a site plan, so you're not seeing every layer of the site, you're not seeing underground utilities. We have non-constructible areas essentially everywhere. So this is uphill, right? So there's a retaining wall here, so you wouldn't obviously create wetlands anywhere here. You certainly wouldn't do it along the road. certainly wouldn't do it along the road. This is a drain easement, I believe owned by the town of Brookfield, we can't do anything here. This is wetlands here. This red line here is the wetlands, I'm sorry, this red line is the wetlands, this is the upland review, so you're not gonna...
Tip-down's right, right where 50 square feet is, is where the tip is.
Correct, so if you, if you evaluate, this is, anything is white, is pavement, right? These are hills, because again, this is a 10-foot drop from front to back, and a 3-foot drop from there, so if you want to develop wetlands, you need somewhere of a level area. This is our septic system, I don't know the code offhand, but I would presume there has to be sufficient separation between that. If you are just looking at Plan B, you might say, hey, Dan, what about, you know, right in here? Right, because you're not in the easement, you're outside of the upland review area, it's green, okay? This is our entire underground detention system, which is a plastic chamber system, and we're gonna have rows of chambers running here that collects all the stormwater runoff and puts it right there.
Where was the 100, you were counting it off, I think you used my rule, it was 100, 110, 20 feet?
Yeah, I think that's where...
Is there any at all?
Right, and it, that, by the way, that proposal, in terms of the underground detention, has not yet been reviewed by the town, so that's not, they might come back and say it needs to be bigger, you need to hold more water. It should be, you know, designed according to Connecticut DEP requirements, but it is currently maxing out this entire area. So here is our control manhole, we're discharging water to a headwell here, this discharges water here, we have a series of catch basins and manholes that are directing the water here. Keep in mind, this is also a slope, all right, again, I did put elevations on these plans, but we are grading from the asphalt downhill, actually over a few feet onto the easement, so that's a hill, it's not even flat.
So is there 200 square feet anywhere?
I don't think there's 200 square feet.
What was last time?
I, I think we had discussed, if we, because it's times four, that's where the 200 square feet came from, I think we had discussed there, I don't see 200 square feet of, of not asphalt on this plan where you could put something.
Okay, I'm sorry, I remember...
And I don't know, I'm not a, I'm not the civil engineer, I don't know the criteria, but I would imagine you need to be away from the septic, I would imagine that you need somewhat level terrain, you also need gravity to flow the water to where you want it to go. I'm not sure that you have anywhere on this entire site where all of those criteria would be met.
I just, I remember it differently, and I reviewed the meeting last time, it was somewhere behind the backside, and you measured, and it was 110, 20 feet. I saw that in a meeting, I'm not sure if I remember that.
Okay, I don't really remember that.
Okay, that's all right, thank you, sir. That was my final question.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, appreciate the time.
I will take a motion. To close, public hearing on Z dash 24 dash 16. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So let's go back to... Is Mr. Philo?
Oh, no, this is Cornell.
Cornell, Mr. Cornell?
Yeah, how are you?
All right, give me one second, sir, all right?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to leave myself from voting on this application, just because I wasn't expecting to be here for it, so I didn't do enough due diligence that I'm comfortable to be willing to vote on.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, and you are very cute. Commissioner Rushman, will you please be on this, and will you also please be the vice chairman?
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would I have to be seated as well if Mr. Henry has switched his...
It's gonna be one, two, three, four, and you are also seated, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Did you get that, Sandra?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay. Let's open the public hearing on 107 Stony Hill Road, that's Z dash 24 dash 20, Renee Cornell, residence, and that is for, I do have a question on this. Required dimension 30, it says, but I just looked up in the R40 and it says 40?
For the front yard?
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now, okay, R40, I've got 40 for minimum front yard. That's what it says there.
Yep, that is 40.
Will we have to amend that?
You can't increase, you can only decrease in R40 front yards.
Yeah, you see that? Other commissioners, you guys see that?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
So what do you think?
What's the application?
Says 30.
It says 30.
Look, yeah, it says 30 under required.
Required?
Yeah. It didn't have the present dimension listed, but we know the proposed, which is kind of the same as the present.
Yeah.
That should be a 40.
40, yep. I don't know how it was advertising the legal on this.
All right, does anybody have the application number?
I'll get online.
We have to deny it, we're not perjured, this evidence, we have to resubmit. We're not allowed to...
You can't increase it, you can only decrease it, or it's requirement.
Okay, and that's what it said there, all right.
Yep.
Go through the whole public hearing, and then...
Yeah, yeah, just gotta resubmit.
All right, so let's go through the public hearing. All right, we're gonna open the public hearing on Z dash 24 dash 20, Renee Cornell, residence. Okay, would the applicant or proponent of the applicant, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail, sir.
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Renee Cornell, and I live on 107 Stony Hill Road, Brookfield, Connecticut, and...
Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals, sir.
Okay, and I'm hearing to, appealing to the Board of Appeals. The building in question is an existing garage that, whose roof is actually falling apart, and which I have no use for unless I fix it due to the fact that it leaks water, it's next to the road, the garage door is facing the road, and it's a busy road, and I have no use for it whatsoever. However, if I'm gonna have to fix it, then I gotta upgrade it, and the house is so tiny that I have no room for an office anyway. So I was trying to get a variance so I can do a bonus room on top, because there is one-story building, and if I could possibly have an overhang of an extra four foot on the second story, that would be, so that's what the application is basically.
Okay.
So the building is, if I'm not mistaken, 20 feet by 16 or so? Let me check on that.
Yes, would you mind, sir, will you pull it up on Google?
No, please.
On Google Earth, or you want GIS?
There's a good, there's a good view of it.
Yeah.
Would you mind if I brought it up, sir?
No, please.
Might help you.
Yeah, you guys are more than welcome to. I don't, I have a little plan, but I have a dog, and it's only sitting way over here, so.
It's sitting on your computer already.
Yep, sorry about that.
Does this look familiar?
Yeah, that's a builder right there.
Okay, go ahead, sir, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, so as we can see, the roof is, you know, in bad shape, it's worse right now, that's probably four years ago. Now, see, what I'm trying to do is level it up with the upper part, and I'm gonna, of course, do better walls, because that's on the cinder block, probably cast it on forms, leaving one wall to remain with the same blueprint that it is right now. It's just a second story, once we get it flat level, it's gonna be over to the, to the left, it's gonna have an overhang of like, say, 5 or 4 feet. So right now, it's 16, and it's gonna be like 20 wide. And then, and then it's basically gonna be, you know, an office up there, and I want...
But roughly another 4 feet wider.
Yes, going to the, yeah, the side, the long way.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and then I wanna put a pool bathroom, for which I was told that I need to change the septic, which is not a big deal, I can do that. So because of the, of the terrain of that, of the, of the property, I gotta, I cannot do a gravity one, I gotta do one with the pump. It gets pushed all the way up, uphill, and then, you know, it goes, goes to the fields. So we did, we did the percoals.
And they're up there somewhere, right?
Yeah, right there, right there, where you're pointing, somewhere, yeah.
Okay.
So we did the, the percoals, probably is the best you can get.
With Mr. Avery from the town?
Yeah, it's submitted, so Dave Broder, it's the name of the gentleman that's doing that, gonna be doing the, the septic thing, so he submitted the permit and everything else. Should be somewhere, which I don't know that, but it's there, to the best of my knowledge. But yeah, so I want to do, like I said, an office, maybe possible a restroom, I know that had to go to, to the state for approval, so I guess that's where it's sitting so far.
Okay.
And yeah, the variance pretty much for the building, it can be, if I can get a second story, and like I said, be about a 4-foot overhang to make it, to make it more appealing and useful.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's any questions of the applicant from any of the commissioners. I have a few. So I was, I've driven by that building for probably 40 years. And you're not the original property owner?
The original property? I co-owned the property.
Co-owned the property?
So since 2013, 14, somewhere there.
Right, but that building was there before you...
Oh, that's been there, who knows when, from when. The house was built in, my memory is not, if I'm not mistaken, 1748 or 1848, somewhere there, but it's centuries old.
Centuries old.
Yeah.
And you're gonna knock down three of the four walls?
Yes, I'm gonna do it with, with forms, you know, cast concrete, because it's a better structure, because I'm gonna pretty much be back feeling to make a level with the upper part.
Is there any possibility, since you're gonna knock down three of the four walls and it's a half fallen-down cinder block construction currently, moving the building back another 15 or 20 feet? That was a question I had, sir.
Well, the reason is, I would then essentially, you know, have to do the whole thing all over again, so if I'm gonna be...
Well, three walls on a cinder block building, and you're gonna do poured concrete?
No, I know, but...
The only reason you're leaving the one wall up is so you're not, so you don't have to go for, it's as-is, it's a...
Right.
Non-conforming building, if you push it back, now you gotta go to...
No, I know, but then it's a whole, a whole, you know what I'm saying?
But you're gonna have a two-story building within 15 feet of the road at that point.
Right, but the garage door will be on the other side.
I understand.
Yeah, so that's the...
Sorry, just because the application doesn't meet the, what was submitted, I wouldn't go that far there, we just...
You know, you know, it's...
Yeah, you know. We'll have to, we'll have to resubmit it anyway.
Yeah, resubmit it anyways.
Yeah.
So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna probably, I should do it, those in favor and stuff, then I close the public hearing.
Yeah.
Do it the right way, okay. Because the applicant, application isn't correct, sir, and will have to be resubmitted anyways.
Okay.
I'm gonna kind of stop you a little bit here, I'll need to...
No, it's okay.
And then we'll go into our closed deliberations, and probably end up having a debate about prejudice. And Mr. Lally, yeah, so you can resubmit, and Mr. Lally will explain that to you, sir.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, do you have any further to say on it?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
Any further questions?
There's a question.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is gonna happen.
There'll be no time for questions with the next application.
So just close, it's all I can do, public?
Correct.
I will take a motion to close the public hearing on Z dash 24 dash 20.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So what we're gonna do next is we're going to go into closed deliberations, I'll explain it to you. Basically, we go into closed deliberations, we speak amongst ourselves, come to a decision, and we'll vote on it here tonight, sir. Okay, let's close deliberations.
Am I permitted to use the restroom while you guys do that?
Absolutely.
If it's my spot or something.
You don't even have to ask.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll take a motion to approve Z dash 24 dash 16, that's 81 Pocano Road. A move. Do I have a second? Okay, and just to reiterate, he already left the room, so the commissioners that are gonna be on this is myself, Vice Chairman, Commissioner Briggs, and Commissioner Anea on deliberations. Okay, discussion?
I mean, we've heard about this one a lot already, and had some time to discuss it. I do like the idea of them possibly adding some evergreens in the front, but, I mean, as the applicant said, this, as far as uses for this land goes, this is one of the less disruptive uses we're talking about from the front, this is going to be a one-story building.
Yeah, that's what it'll basically look like, even though it's still...
It's not gonna have as much traffic as a lot of other potential property or industrial property would, and, I mean, the applicant has to be able to use the land for something, as is our purpose to prepare this as well as otherwise not useful. So in this instance, because we kind of proved it on the basis of wetlands, and that's why they come, they came to us asking for it, instead of the wetlands just doing their way, I'm in favor of approving it.
Okay, and then he did mention the 9 feet, so if it were to have approval, you'd be okay with 9 feet, and then...
Yeah, and some evergreen, we can discuss a specific minimum amount if we want, for, I don't know, how many, what we should set for how many evergreens, but I...
I think we probably should have asked.
Well, there's nothing stopping him from having more.
You might have some idea of that.
I have a couple, I have a couple of comments, and it seems that Brookfield is now becoming a self-storage capital. And it's probably the most financially easy kind of construction there is. On the wetland side of things, there are some pervious surfaces and so on he could be working with. Not that this particular project would need that, in my opinion, for the variance, but to be, to work with the inland wetlands, typically, they, they don't, they don't budge, 50 square feet is nothing, you can put a rain garden in that would be more beneficial to the wetlands than the 50 square feet he's working with, you know, and pervious surfaces would actually add more water to the wetlands than, than what they're, all the blacktop he's doing, and he's capturing all the drainage anyhow, so. There are a lot of things that can be done, but they're, they're arguing with the wetlands, so this is probably a better course.
Well, the wetland mission seems like one of his hardships.
Yeah, and as far as the evergreens go, I would say minimally, you would want, the green giant is probably, it's an R variety, you probably want something that's no less than 8 to 10 feet, and that's the spec on it, on an evergreen.
How many is that? I don't know, how big, how long are the buildings? Pretty long, they're 40,000 square feet total.
The width of the buildings is 130 feet, except for the largest one, which has...
So they're 130 feet long?
Yeah, the left and, left and center are 130, the, yeah, right by the wall.
I would say you wanna probably do a minimum of six trees per building. And some of the hardwoods, I mean, if you wanted to eliminate them. Do you have any further follow-up? Do you have any further follow-up?
No.
Commissioner, I wouldn't mind going next.
Okay.
Okay. I see it a little bit differently. I watched multiple of times, and just rewatched it again today, the inland wetlands meeting, the only one they went to on March 11th, and the chairwoman and the other commissioners there spoke about clear and prudent alternatives. This was the first plan, okay, not the one that's coming in front of us, that very first one was the very, very first and only plan that they presented to wetlands. They, they could clearly move two of the buildings back, absolutely no problem at all, not disturb any wetlands, and then shrink the size of the middle building. That was one option that they spoke a little bit about in wetlands. They also spoke about coming to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I think there's a little bit of an issue, I know we spoke about it really briefly last meeting, when the applicant was going over, you know, basically the different things the Zoning Board of Appeals looks for and doesn't allow, and things like that. We can't base any kind of a decision based on whether or not, and, you know, you could throw a quarter up in the air and get heads or tails on whether or not our decision is based upon wetlands, approving something or not, but like Commissioner Anea asked last time, which the applicant agreed to me, so was at the last-minute meeting, I'm gonna repeat it again, because I said it earlier, Commissioner Anea asked at the first meeting in Wetlands 311, he said that they seem confident, meaning wetlands, that if the ZBA granted a variance, you would no longer need a public hearing, and they, they would also agree to not have you hire a third-party scientist to review your soil scientist's work, and he said that that was a pretty accurate statement from them. So I think there's an argument to be made that our decision affects what's gonna go on in wetlands, and I know that we can't do that. Also, another thing that he brought up, which I said, hey, move the two buildings back, keep them exactly the same size, move them back within the proper setbacks, the regulations, but just shrink the size of the other one. Tried to bring up about, well, it's gonna have a little curvature and stuff, and I went to the fire chief and asked him a question about that, you know, straight versus have a little bit more room. More room, the better, as far as the fire department's concerned, and that's safety, and that's, that's our only real concern. So we could technically, other than it's a financial reason, make the middle building smaller, and we cannot grant a variance based anything on financial either. So I have a few issues to this, the biggest thing, excuse me, is, is that I think there are other alternatives, I remembered it totally differently, and I reviewed it yesterday, the meeting that we had last month with him, and he did go over, there was 100, I think it was 110s, he measured out 110 feet, there's gotta be someplace in there that they can make another plan and have a 10-foot by 20-foot area to create wetlands and present that to them, and he could have the other two buildings back as well. to create wetlands and present that to them, and he could have the other two buildings back as well. So, there's, there's options and there's alternatives, and the last thing is, um, when it comes to the zoning board of appeals, we, we are, we're in the law, we're quasi-judicial, and I believe that we should be the absolute last step in the process, not the second, third, or fourth step in the process, we're the last step before something has to go to court. If he had absolutely zero alternatives, he went in front of wetlands two or three times, and there was no place that wouldn't even allow him to create it, I would look at this totally differently and I would agree with everybody else here, that's, that's kinda how I see it right now, so, I'm leaning against it, but I'd like to hear from the rest of the commissioners, Commissioner Anea.
My sense is that all of the feasible, um, alternative was looked at because it's, it is about it, you know, going into, into a wetland area, and I think that is of the land, and that's why I would think it's a genuine hardship. And he did, I know he acknowledged that there's, you know, a financial component to this and the reasoning why they're shrinking that, that second building in the middle, but, um, I don't think that's what he's resting his argument on, in my opinion. But, I suppose there could be other ways to, um, construct this, you know, maybe not having these spaces in between, um, the two of them if you're trying to get it out of, you know, the path of the wetlands, but, you know, since this whole review area falls there, they'd have to go through a whole other process, and I, I don't think inland wetlands is waiting for an opinion from us on this.
What about moving the two buildings, the left and right, or the north and south building back, and leaving that one there and then just requesting a variance for the center building?
Can they, can they request one for only one structure on the property, or do they have to request it for, um, all of the?
Mr. Lally, I'll ask you that question, I believe they can.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what the application says.
It's all three buildings on the application.
It's all three, yeah.
But either way, they'd be requesting a front yard setback.
Yeah, so you're not insane.
So, and if they moved their, the, as he said, I think, last time, if they had to move the side two buildings back more.
You get that.
Then you have a bigger curve, which goes back to safety, steeper the curve, which you get, is also going downhill, means that cars that are trying to drive by each other are more likely to not notice each other and cause accidents.
The, the aesthetics of the road and the other metal buildings that are structured current, just south of the firehouse, this would, this is mu- much less intrusive, and the gas line is a big deal, is, as far as a hardship goes. And you could jockey it around more and you could, and, and, but it's not gonna really change the outcome, you're still gonna wind up with a variance, and, and, and so.
Of something, even on one building?
Yeah, it doesn't matter, at this one.
Um, well, the evergreens, I was gonna ask you.
I think we have to take it as, as a fact that, um, that the, that the wetlands decision is what it is. I mean, we could say we should go back to them, but I think the outcome is unlikely to be different.
I'm convinced, I'm convinced if we have the stipulations of the, the evergreens and nine-foot rather than ten-foot, but I don't know, how many have you mentioned?
Well, so Larry said, you know, six per building, so roughly.
Except the northern building's a little bigger.
Yeah, so that's, I don't know, I, I said twenty-four because one building is quite a bit.
Six, 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 that's eighteen, yeah, it's another, eighty feeters, it's, it's longer, it's a lot longer.
It's not a perfect size.
Right, do we, do we need that much blanket coverage of the front if we already think that the buildings are going to be aesthetically fit with the surrounding area? I mean, the, the purpose of the evergreens is, in a sense, to conceal the buildings, but if the buildings already are aesthetically pleasing, if there's already, there's already gonna be, I believe, bushes and whatnot there anyway, it's not, we need a blanket wall of that.
Reduce it to fifteen, you know, at least, but.
I was gonna say, eight, eight a building, it's like, yeah, whatever, so, here's six, twelve, eight, maybe six a building? Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, thirteen to eighteen, something like that.
Makes six.
So, eighteen of all evergreens?
Mr.? How are you with that, adding some evergreens in the front and reducing from a ten-foot to a nine-foot variance?
I think, you know, dealing, you know, small figures like that, you know, a one-foot difference, I don't think it would, it would have a big impact on, you know, aesthetics. Um, and I know, but was part of the reason why the evergreens were mentioned because it would help conceal the building better than other types of trees?
Yeah, it's year-round.
It's year-round, right, in the winter, it's not, you know, dying off and you're staring right through it, basically, evergreen is evergreen. Yeah. That's the thing, so nine or ten, you're okay with?
You also diminish the apparent, um, distance of the building from the front, you know, if you have some, um, obscuring of that with, with the, with those materials, so, kind of being in the face, it'd be less evident.
Um, I'm, I'm convinced, if it's, if it's six of the evergreens per building and a nine foot rather than a ten, I'm very comfortable with it. I'm okay if somebody, are you guys okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would you, uh, would you like to make the stipulation, sir?
Um, sure, well, I will make a motion that we approve of the application, um, with the stipulation added that, um, there'd be, um, a minimum of, say, six evergreen trees in the front.
Per building? Per building?
Per building, right, and, sorry, per building, do you wanna specify, so it's a height or just?
Um, I think he said, oh, trying to remember what Commissioner Rushmore said, I think he said six feet, or eight to ten feet? Okay.
So, it's a total of eighteen trees?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, eighteen trees, eight to ten feet tall evergreen, and drop in a variance from a ten-foot to a nine-foot?
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with that, if you're comfortable. Are you, are you comfortable with that? Are you comfortable? Are we ready to vote? Oh, wait.
That's devotion?
That's devotion, so, we need a second on that, right, Carl?
Yes, I'll second that, it'd be described stipulations.
Alright, you wanna go over it one more time before we vote?
I think we all got it.
We all got it, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye, all those opposed? No one opposed, abstentions, come on, okay, the motion passes, congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, sir. We'll get everything written out exactly correct on that. I'll have to read the front, friends.
I'll write the word here.
Yeah, we'll have to write it out exactly where it is. Alright, now we gotta go back. Alright, I will take a motion to approve Z dash twenty-four dash twenty, that is Renee S. Cornell residence.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion, we already know there's, there's a goof on here, required dimension's supposed to be forty rather than thirty, is everybody comfortable with this? Okay, so, we're gonna have to, the required dimension's supposed to be forty on this.
Do we, do we?
We're gonna have to approve it without, disapprove without prejudice. All those in favor who approve Z dash twenty-four dash twenty, say aye. All those opposed or want to disapprove without prejudice, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, to unanimous, approve without prejudice, thank you, sir. Alright. Deny, deny without prejudice. Okay, I just noticed that the very, as soon as we opened up, and I went across and read it.
Good catch.
Yeah, I just saw that.
A question, I'm not really able to answer this, but I'm thinking about self-storage, um, so, the, the self-storage applicant, the variation that we denied of the, uh, the big building on Grasberg's Road.
Grasberg's Road.
Did they take steps to conform to the zoning?
Absolutely, and they did it, that's why it's being built. Yeah, same thing on the Starbucks, we denied that, but somehow they figured out how to do it and it's being built.
But of all the claims, it wouldn't possibly be economically feasible, you know, it's a pretty massive building.
It is, okay, um, moving on, old business, there's none, new business, there's none, table items, there's none. Informal discussion, everybody probably knows where I put this on there, this is discussion on zoning regulation, article eight dot eleven, sections A and E, and possible update the ZBA application already, eight eleven echo two. I could pull it up if everybody wants to read it, but this is personal notice to property owners, I think on our application, we should add one hundred feet. And then we won't have what happened to us last time, because I believe it was almost fifty people in the condos that had to get notified in, uh, on that last application, so I, uh, Ledgewood, I think it was, Ledgewood or Newbury?
Newbury.
Newbury, but it was almost, I think it was forty-eight people that had to be notified on it, cause they were within a hundred feet. And rightly enough, the applicant, you know, he went by what the application said, it just said a budding, you know, that's why he just notified those couple of people.
So, you're, you, you're, you're suggesting that we make an increase so more people in the condo complex are notified?
No, 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 add what the regulation says, I can pull it up here if you want.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine, I was, I was at that meeting.
Okay, yeah, I think you should add a hundred feet.
In a conversation with us, in a situation when you're in a neighborhood and houses are very much spaced out, limiting that distance, I just think in a dense populated area, the more people that get a voice, the better.
I agree.
In a condo where they're very much being impacted, cause it's dense housing.
The people came tonight, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I agree, um, the regulation itself, I can pull it up, all the way down, Fran, Fran's one who found it and then I dug through and found it, but it clearly says a hundred feet, and I believe it's five hundred feet within towns, but that's something the town has to know.
Exactly, the town notifies.
Yeah, there's a variance coming in front of us and it's within five hundred feet of a border, we have to notify the town clerk, I think it is, of the other town. But I think that we should at least add that hundred feet, you know, after a budding, on the application, so that we don't have that goof again. Cause he had to come back because of that. What does everybody think of that?
Yeah, so just on the, like, like this page of the application.
Yeah, where it says notification, just add.
Yeah, of.
Within a hundred feet of.
Yeah.
Of your property.
Just so that, no one gets missed.
Yeah, nobody gets missed, the more voices, the better.
It's not limiting the scope, it's actually increasing the scope to find people that, just because this isn't a budding, it still might be within range.
Yeah, if you look at that, um, on the, on the Google Earth or on the GIS, that, one hundred feet of their property, that affected Newbury Village. Once it touches that property line, you gotta notify everybody.
Did he get an approval?
What's that?
On his variance?
This one right here, we just approved it?
No, the other one that you were talking about, Newbury Village.
Oh, we didn't have one coming from this.
So, he's saying this one, it included Newbury Village as well?
Yeah, his property line, when we, we were looking at on the GIS, that back part of our property line was within a hundred feet of Newbury Village, so that's why those townhomes had to be notified. So, I just, I think if we put that hundred feet on there.
Just clarifies it for the application or something that's already a regulated.
Right, and he rightly said, I watched the meeting again, he's like, well, it's in the budding, I'm like, eh, I think that's, that's when, I thought, I knew there was a footage, I didn't say no, it was a hundred.
Yeah, a hundred.
Okay, so everybody's okay with that, we'll add that to the application.
Sure.
Um, is there any other informal discussion? Alright, uh, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.